Welcome to the January 23, 2024 City Council Meeting. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Taylor, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time that we can spend together in this meeting. Father, we ask that you give us humble spirits, Father, as we work on the agendas of the city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: Consent Agenda, Public Hearing, Public Comment, and General Business. The first section is Consent Agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the Consent Agenda? Yes.
Could we pull item number three, four? Since I was absent.
And we need to pull the October 25 minutes and November 1.
From 2020, which one?
October 25 and November 1.
November 1. From 2022? Okay. I'm sorry, yes. All right, so we're going to move item number four to General Business.
To what?
Isn't that what you asked for, Jeff?
No, no, it doesn't have to go to General Business, but you just take it off. You separate it from Consent Agenda, and you do the ones that you can vote for on the Consent Agenda, and you bring them up each one at a time, or whichever ones are pulled off from Consent.
I thought you wanted to speak to it or something.
So I would like to speak to it, so, but it doesn't have to go to General Business, unless you want to put it to General Business, that's fine. Either direction, but you're not just saying, hey, I'm making, you know, a motion for all four of these items, take that item off, and we can talk about that separately.
I think just since we're going to be voting on these, all of these individually, it'd make more sense to put it on General Business and then vote for Consent to Digital 1, 2, 3, if possible.
Whatever.
If you're fine with that.
Yep.
Okay, so let's start with item number one. So we would approve the minutes from 2022, all except for November, October 25 and November 1. Obviously, that would exclude myself and Councilman Taylor. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, once our clerk is ready, I would move for item number one on the Consent Agenda.
Second. Right. Any discussion?
Only to kill time, so she has enough time to pull up the vote.
So while, if you want to kill time, I do have one. I think it was on page 12 or something, somewhere around there, one of those, there's a lot of pages. But that, the item, it said Randy Nelson was absent, then he voted no, and then he was absent again. I think he was absent the entire meeting, so it should have been absent the entire time, so, just simple typo, yep.
Alicia, how would you like us to do this, since Agenda Number One, ready to go? Okay, and this will be minus October 29 and November 1. Okay, all those in favor, except for Councilman Taylor and I, go ahead and vote, and then we'll abstain. Yeah. Oh, just go ahead and vote, sorry.
Councilwoman Halkeson, did you save? Did you press save?
You gotta save it.
Save.
There we go. The motion passed.
Okay, now we'll vote on October 25 and November 1, excluding my, well, we'll vote on October 25 and November 1 for those who were present.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
So what are the dates of this one now, what we're talking?
This is still on item one, but Councilman Dolan was not present for October 25 and November 1.
Of 2022?
Of 2022.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Alicia, can you separate that out?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. All right, let's go ahead and vote, please.
The motion passed, 3-3.
Okay. So now we'll vote on item number two, consideration of approving the minutes from...
What happened? We didn't see it.
It was 3-0, 3 abstained.
All right, consideration of approving the minutes from the December 12, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Consideration of approving the minutes from the January 9, 2024 meeting?
So moved. Second.
And that I would like to abstain, since I was sick and missed that meeting.
Okay. Can we go ahead and vote? Okay, great, so now we want to move item number four to General Business. Was that the motion?
If possible.
Okay, do we want to do that by consensus and just move that to General Business? All right. Okay. That will be moved to General Business. All right, moving on to our public hearing. The next section is Public Hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure: Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed in the matter referred to counsel for deliberation. Consideration of adopting an ordinance, amending City Code to provide surety requirements for the decommissioning of energy storage facilities. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Rachel Freshisen.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This zoning ordinance amendment would affect energy storage facilities within the city. These uses are permitted by a conditional use permit in all residential, commercial, institutional, and our I-1 restricted industrial districts. They are permitted by right in the I-2 light industrial and I-3 heavy industrial districts. As I mentioned during our business site and briefing at our last meeting on January 9, we have worked with Mr. Friedman's office, as well as outside counsel with experience in these matters, to bring you this ordinance today. This amendment was initiated by staff to ensure that any energy storage project, such as a battery energy storage system or solar facility, has an agreement in place to decommission all of the equipment associated with the facility, so that they are removed and disposed of properly if operations of the facility cease. The draft ordinance also requires a surety, which ensures that the developer has the financial means to carry out the decommissioning if needed. The terms of the agreements would be determined on a project-by-project basis and would be approved by the city attorney's office prior to execution. Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinance amendment at their meeting on December 13, and I will be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, councilors, and good evening, excuse me, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is Chris Meyer. I'm with East Point Energy, a battery energy storage developer. We secured a conditional use permit from you earlier last year, you might remember that project. We are doing another project in an industrial-zoned parcel in the city, and which most likely catalyzed the staff to develop this ordinance, which we support. We reviewed it earlier this month and believe it adequate and flexible enough for us to continue our projects. Probably, and actually, excuse me, most importantly, we appreciate the flexibility that is built into this ordinance that gives project developers and staff the ability to agree upon the type of financial assurance. Without flexibility with the financial assurance, competition concerns noted by the Planning Commission are very legitimate, because narrow financial assurance options can create financial hurdles for many small developers. Additionally, requiring the decommissioning plan and estimate as a condition of site approval is a proper location for such a requirement in the project development timelines. Having such a requirement earlier, let's say during a CUP process or something like that, we do not have the information yet on exactly some of the types of equipment we're going to use that would then thus not allow us to do an actual proper estimate. Finally, requiring the utilization of licensed and professional engineers based here in Virginia to prepare the decommissioning estimate, we believe is a reasonable manner to ensure the quality in that decommissioning analysis. I look forward to seeing you again in the coming weeks, to hopefully finalizing siding agreements that we've been negotiating with your staff, and we wish you the best of luck with your deliberations this evening. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Any voicemails from citizens?
There are none.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with the council. May I have a motion? Motion from anyone?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Or do I want to speak to your motion? No? No? Discussion? No? Okay, well, let's vote. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I'm reading in the Planning Commission meeting minutes what brought this up, and it looks like Matt Friedman replied, so if you want to give the reply to everybody here as well.
If I could tell you the reason this came up.
The reason, that's, yeah.
This came up specifically because there is going to be a need for an agreement to decommission, and then some type of financial guarantee to be able to enforce that agreement if it's breached. So that's really what this ordinance speaks to and arises from some statutory language that's specific to solar facilities, but we believed in consultation with outside counsel that we can have it for all energy storage facilities, particularly with something of this nature that East Point had mentioned, where batteries may be involved, because from what I understand, there could be some risks associated with fire.
And so this ordinance, which has been reviewed by staff, your office, as well as the Planning Commission, comes to some terms that says, hey, here's the process of what needs to happen to make sure the citizens are as safe as possible, making sure companies that we approve have at least a plan on what to do to remove the things that may be very harmful.
Yes, sir.
And if not, there's a bond that's posted and...
That's right, or any other surety that's mentioned in here or agreed upon in the decommissioning agreement. Thank you.
Councilman Dolan?
Yeah, question two. There was a lot of discussion in the minutes about the finances of the company, whether or not, how they would guarantee that the finances would be there to remove this stuff if they had to. Is there any sort of assurance about that, or?
Well, as part of the decommissioning agreement, we would require them to post some type of surety bond, a letter of credit, or something else, so they would be responsible for working through an insurance company or some other type of corporation to be able to give us that surety. And I'm sure, too, and I guess, and Rachel may be able to, excuse me, Ms. Freshisen may be able to speak to this as well a little bit further, but there's a lot more that's involved with this. So there would be site plans, there would be other things that have various checks and balances to address these types of issues.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess lots of other types of issues, that'd be really hard to come up with an ordinance that actually meets it, because if the cost to decommission today is $100,000, for just round numbers, and then now you're going to keep it in force for 40 years, and in 40 years from now, the costs have gone down, been like calculators or computers, as opposed to food prices that have inflated versus deflated, I don't know how you even quantify that for the surety bond, to have some element that says here's about what it's going to be, because you're typically doing these things for not a week, right? A year, two, 10, 20? Maybe you can address that. Yeah. Just, I mean, what's the plans? You know, you have some of these that, one that we've already looked at, another, as you mentioned, coming back again. What's kind of the timeframe of these facilities?
These facilities are 35 years at a minimum. The batteries will degrade over time, and you can change them out. I mean, it's, we would imagine going on for longer periods of time. To your point, right, things change in value. What we appreciate of the ordinance is the ability to, again, structure our agreement that would allow us to, I think, recognize those changes and modify those values. Everything, though, that has to be also revised, or sorry, reviewed by a professional engineer and stamped.
So the intent of these facilities are going to be, you know, again, not holding you to it, but just so we have at least an idea of the timeframe, it's like 35 kind of years, and some of the batteries that may be replaceable, the facility is still there, so it doesn't require decommissioning of the facility.
Correct.
It just requires replacement of batteries and...
Correct, but this is just basically like an insurance policy, in case something happens, then...
So again, with that, it's, I appreciate the intent, and I'll happily vote for it, but, you know, I really kind of wonder, when you're thinking about those elements, the financial elements, of how do you really quantify something 35 years hence, that may be something that is completely deflated in price versus things that have inflated in price, that cost more. I got a feeling disposal of new types of batteries are going to have some element of technology in 35 years that makes them probably fairly easy compared to today, but just...
If it helps with clarification for council, we would be relying on experts in these particular fields, and the ordinance does allow for an inflation factor to be incorporated into the agreement, so...
But hopefully, it could also be the element of a deflation factor.
That's right.
I mean, you know, we look at these computers that used to cost, you know, $50,000. Now, once it's done, you throw it away, you know, so because of, technology has deflated lots of prices, so hopefully that could be built in there, just so it's not, you know, so it's at least a competitive ordinance and one that allows for competition amongst different players, as opposed to those that are just, you know, have on retainer the best attorneys and experts that can verify for it. So it'd be nice to allow for a free, fair exchange and free competition, as opposed to just those with the deepest pockets, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
There it is.
The motion passes, 6-0.
Okay. Moving on to Public Comment, the next section is Public Comment. During Public Comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing a group have five minutes to speak. Typically, City Council takes comments made under the Public Comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Citizens often express conflicting and diverse positions regarding specific issues under consideration. To encourage citizen participation and to avoid intimidation to persons who may express sometimes unpopular opinions, applause, cheers, or jeers from the audience are not permitted. When appearing before City Council, citizens may not engage in behavior that intimidates or insults others, engage in disruptive behavior, use profanity or vulgar language, promote private business ventures, or campaign for office. We will now hear from a citizen regarding the hate mail situation and what we can do about it, Mr. Robert Flood. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Yes, my name is Robert Flood. I thank y'all again, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the rest of the councilmen. This topic is something that, you know, that's going on everywhere today, about hate mail, a lot of different things that people try to go back in the 40s and 50s to do. My opinion about it, it happened in December, it had to be somebody in the neighborhood, somebody that knew when to do it, or somebody that got paid to do it, to make it think that maybe it was somebody different and the person looked like one of y'all up. But I think about the lights in the city, or the streets, where, two weeks ago, I rode around 14th Street, 13th Street, Pear Street, Fillmore Street, every year since I seen the lights. They dimmed. They out. And this is in Ward 2, Mr. Wilder's Ward. And I thought about it, you know, if the lights was on, where they seen these guys or whoever was doing this hate mail, could have made the police job a little easier when they looked at camera. They could have seen it a little clearer. There's a lady that, you know, most of y'all know, she said she's the mayor of Lynchburg, and we said, you're the mayor of Lynchburg. She had been complaining about lights around her neighborhood, that don't come on, blinking, and she haven't got no response from nobody. I don't know exactly if it's a part of Sterling or city manager, I don't know who, engineer or who go by, look at the lights and see whether we need to brighten them up, and put cameras. I mean, you got 9/11 in New York, and after that, the whole city lit up like a Christmas tree. Cameras everywhere. And when you see certain things on TV or see certain things, the cameras got the people right there, we can reach out to them almost. Why can't we do it in a small town like Lynchburg? Ward 2, Boonsborough, Fort Hill, Timberlake, everybody live everywhere, black and white. It's not only just a minority area, because everybody live there, poor people, but we need to brighten up these lights, especially in Ward 2, so people can see and feel comfortable when they come out the door, and not be scared to come out the door, because the lights, streetlights are not on, or they're blinking or whatever they're doing. And I think that would help out a lot if a situation happened, and you have to go through the camera to see who done it, you know, at least you could see them a little clear. And I thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to General Business. Yes?
We have an item at Finance Committee related to allocating $15,000 from the Reserve for Contingency to Lynchburg, up to $15,000 to Lynchburg City Schools for the Heritage Theory Program that did pass by a vote of 2 to 1, and I would ask council to add it to the agenda at the bottom of General Business.
Okay. Is that a motion?
It would be a motion unless it's accepted by consensus.
Okay, is there a consensus to add that to the General Business?
No.
Okay, do we have a majority?
Then I do move accordingly, then.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do you want to speak to your motion?
I'll speak to it. This is just to add it to the agenda, so I'll speak to the merits of the content at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Just, I think it's good to add to our conversation.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes?
So with this, to add it to the agenda, it wasn't on the agenda at Finance Committee today. It was brought up as a surprise. No documentation, no nothing. Normally, that's not a good way to proceed with spending taxpayer resources, is just saying, let's put something on the agenda at the last minute, and then, you know, maybe have an argument about pulling on heartstrings to spend some more taxpayer resources. I think the process, so since the motion is dealing with putting it on the agenda, I think the process should be followed. I mean, we have rules of procedure, where you put something on the agenda last Thursday, so at least we can see it, hear it, the citizens can see it and hear it, we can have an actual discussion about it, and then, once it comes up, at least we have some documentation that says who's asking, what is it for, rather than just speculative hearsay that says some people wanted some money, and we should give it to them, so let's put it on the agenda. I think that's a bad, a bad policy to just add something and then to vote on it later. So I'll be voting against adding it to the agenda. I think we should have proper procedures. And we could have that discussion where it's actually put on the agenda at next meeting, you know, but...
Clarification, what is the $15,000 for?
So that would be the next, just if I may, the item is putting it on the agenda, rather than having the discussion of what it's for.
Right now, yeah, right now, we're just discussing adding it to the agenda, then we'd be able to discuss the money if we just add it to the agenda. So right now, he's just motioning if we can add it to the General Business, and then we'd discuss that, if we can get it on the agenda tonight, because he did discuss it at Finance earlier. So he's just asking that we re-discuss it tonight for General Business. So that's the motion. All right, so we can, Alicia, will we just do a voice vote here?
I got to set up.
Oh, you are, okay. Okay, so the motion in the second is to add it to the, to General Business to discuss for...
Just one quick question to our city attorney, is, under the rules of procedure, normally when we're amending the agenda, we adopt that before we start proceeding with the agenda, or do we normally change the agenda midstream?
So typically, you all would, you'd proceed on an adopted agenda, but nothing would prevent you all, for whatever need, from a majority acting to amend the agenda for any reason, if you all saw fit.
But again, normal procedure is at the beginning.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to vote to add this to General Business, or not to, either way. Go ahead and vote.
Mayor Reed and Councilmember Wilder?
All right, I will reset this.
Oh, it didn't let me save it.
One moment.
Sorry. Not letting me.
We voted twice.
Hope it's...
It came up and went away real fast.
It's on, okay.
Oh.
Didn't say.
Yeah, it's still not doing it.
Would you like to vote?
Let's just do it by voice, voice vote.
It's just your vote.
Oh, yes.
It just did what?
The motion passes, 5-1.
Okay, so we'll add this to the bottom of General Business to discuss. All right. The next section is General Business. This section includes general items of new business. This is consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024. Thank you.
The 3-4 would go after the 6-9, I believe. So if you want to do the ones for the Finance Committee first.
Okay, hold on.
Normally, you're putting them at the end.
Do Finance at the end?
No, 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 just to keep them in order, but the one, since we moved 3-4 out of Consent Agenda, move that to the end.
Oh, out of Consent? Okay, sorry. Sorry, y'all.
So then it goes to...
Okay, consideration, sorry, consideration of adopting Resolution R24004, amending the fiscal year 2024 budget to reflect adjustments in the general $1 million, $1 million, Fleet Services, $2.4 million, and City Capital Projects, $4.9 million funds, with resources of $8.3 million from the unassigned general funds balance. Is that what we're doing right now?
I thought you were doing item 6, 7, the items that came, the COPS grant that came from the Finance Committee.
That's right. What's that one I have?
We're looking on the General Business, the one that reflects here, the first three are two grants that were during Finance that were about public safety. The third was at PDC Highway, and, but I believe what the mayor was reading was the one from Consent, unless, did you want to take up the consent?
No, she just read the COPS Hiring Program Grant.
Yeah, that's why I was starting, and I got interrupted.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It sounded, okay.
I heard the $1 million and the, I didn't hear the 225.
No, I started reading the correct one, and then I got interrupted. Okay, sorry, chief. Consideration of introducing a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating $225,690 for the 2023 U.S. Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program Grant. This item went to our Finance Committee earlier today, and I will defer to the and appropriating two point, two hundred and twenty five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars for the 2023 U.S. Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program Grant. This item went to our Finance Committee earlier today, and I will defer to the Chair of that Committee, Vice Mayor Feraldi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Prior to speaking to this, I'd love the Chief to give a brief background.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of Council. This is one of two grants, the one immediately to follow this, that we are partnering with Horizon Behavioral Health on. Ms. Melissa Lucy is behind me, CEO of Horizon, who you all know. They've been instrumental in helping us with the grant writing portion of this, as well as the partnership to ensure that this program goes forward. And both these grants will fund a mental health co-responder model, which will basically partner a police officer and a mental health clinician in a car together to respond to mental health calls in our community. As you've seen me before you many times, talking about the stress it puts on the limited resources we have, the mental health calls for service are significantly impacting that. We're hoping that this program, once fully implemented, will allow us to minimize the number of emergency custody orders that we have to take by allowing a mental health clinician to better evaluate the person in crisis in the field as opposed to our officers having to take them into custody under an involuntary commitment through a civil process. So this first grant allows for, it's a thirty-six month window, allows for us to hire a police officer. There is a hundred thousand dollar local match that is covered out of the general fund budget from the police department. And then it'll be supplemented by the second grant that will speak to the other half of this program.
Madam Mayor, not unlike how we handled this in Finance Committee, since they are related, if we could also get the background on agenda item number eight.
Go ahead, that's fine.
All right, so that would be consideration of introducing a resolution amending fiscal year 2024 city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating four hundred thousand dollars for the implementation of a mental health cosponsor model.
Thank you. So this portion, or this grant, rather, provides salary and benefits for two years for a mental health clinician that will be hired through Horizon Behavioral Health, will contract with them for that as a part of this grant. Then it allows also for another roughly, a little over two hundred thousand dollars in funds. Initially, this grant was applied for before the other grant, not knowing we would get a full-time position awarded in the grant. So we talked to the Department of Justice, that'll allow us to reallocate these funds to cover some more funding that will be needed for the clinician and that was probably budgeted, as well as to use these funds to cover officer-related overtime outside of the co-responder model related directly to mental health calls for service, ECOs, TDOs, and our CIT program, again, another partnership that we have with Horizon. And again, Ms. Lucy is here to help answer any questions you may have on her half, or to speak on behalf of both of the grants.
Would you like to say anything?
Not unless you have questions. We're just excited about the partnership and excited about getting this program going in Lynchburg and leading the charge throughout the state.
Thank you.
And on that front, Madam Mayor, these two items, when coupled together, to simply boil it down for those watching at home, would take a full-time law enforcement professional and partner them up with a mental health clinician and put them in the field. Nobody else, no one else is doing this in the Commonwealth that I know of. If they are, it's not anywhere close around here. So we'll go with that. In any event, the mental health issue is a major, major item for communities all over the place to handle, and this is another creative solution to a problem. And I commend you both for taking on the initiative to bring this to us. And in conjunction with what was passed in the last year's budget for a crisis receiving center, Lynchburg's leading the way, and it shouldn't be any, any other way. So I commend, again, I commend you both. In full disclosure, I do sit on the board for Horizon Behavioral Health. However, in that capacity, I gain very little, if not nothing, by doing it. So I can say in full confidence that by casting a vote, it would not be a conflict of interest. With all that being said, I'm happy to motion in favor of item number seven, which is the two hundred and twenty five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars for the 2023 U.S. Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program Grant.
This does not require a second, so is there any discussion? Dr. Wilder?
Again, I was also in the Finance Committee. I totally support this motion. You know, you look all over the country and you see where situations have happened, where persons had mental conditions and were arrested, or a person didn't know really how, they've got, police officers get some training. But again, sometimes you need really that professional to make sure when a person's having a crisis, that they have the best care. So it takes with ambiguity, what if we didn't have this, or what if we had that? So it gives away that ambiguity. It also just gives our police force more support when they're out there in the field. Because there's so many mental health challenges going on all over the country, even in Lynchburg. So I'm glad to see us leading the way. I'm so glad to see officers getting more support. I'm so glad for our community that we have this now in our community, that we can show, you always hear, what are the policemen doing? What are they doing this? You know, we have the cameras on street corners now, we have those other items, we like, if there's a gunshot, the cameras kind of can zoom into certain spots in our community. So we're doing different technology things in our community to make our community safer, to make our community better, to give our police officers more resources, build a new police department, so make sure we support our police officers and give them more support. So this is another area where our community is partnering together Horizon, that partnering together to make our community even safer, to make persons who are having a mental crisis, make sure that they are safer, that their rights aren't violated, that there's someone that can really listen to them and support them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Down time with a police officer being on the job.
So the goal, and there was, Councilmember Hugson correctly asked in Finance Committee if there's going to be any metrics. There is an evaluation period, this is a model, the R model. I lean to the expert to answer that, but that's been carried across the country for the evaluation of this to make sure that it's being effective. But to simply answer your question, Councilmember Taylor, the goal is that with the first responder, police officer, paired with a mental health clinician, that we're going to avoid a lot of the ECOs we currently take in the custody or emergency custody orders, which oftentimes turn into TDOs, which then allow or not allow, they require our officers to then sit for days at, and. So if we can lower the number of emergency custody orders by getting this person in a mental health crisis the services they need upfront and diverting them away from that ECO and TDO system, then it frees up those officers almost immediately in most cases. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we can go ahead and vote.
The motion passes six, zero, with one absent.
Madam Mayor, continuing, since we had these two considered together, I do move adoption of agenda item number eight.
Okay, and this also does not require a second. Is there any discussion on this? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes six, zero, with one absent.
All right, moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution to increase the city's lane mileage for VDOT Highway maintenance payments. Mr. Newland, did you want to speak on this?
Sure, just went to the PDC earlier this, this month. Every year, we have usually some lane section of roadway that gets either improved or added. So therefore, we come back and we go through Council to approve this, and we send it to VDOT to increase their lane mileage. This year, it's three point seven four lane miles.
Okay, thank you very much. This item went to our Physical Development Committee on January ninth, 2024, and I will defer to the Chair of that Committee, Councilman Taylor.
We adopted.
Okay, this does not require a second. Any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Hugson? Yes?
So maybe this is to Lee, or maybe it's to the City Manager, but this has been the second one that I've, a person that I've known for twenty, thirty years, that I see a new name on there. So what's happened? Joseph Newland, as opposed to Lee Newland. Last time, we had, I think, Tom Martin, as opposed to, you know, some, so who's doing these things? That, that we're grabbing these names that are off of the, you know, some payroll site as opposed to knowing these people? Just.
They themselves are filling it out.
I got a feeling he didn't put Joseph Newland. There's no way he put Joseph Newland. Good, good, just wanted to make sure. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passes six, zero, with one absent.
All right, so now we go back to our item that we moved off of the consent agenda, which would be item number four, which was the consideration of adopting Resolution R twenty four zero zero four, amending the fiscal year 2024 budget to reflect adjustments in the general one million dollars, and then fleet services, two point four million dollars, and then the city capital projects, four point nine million dollars funds with resources of eight point three million dollars from the unassigned general fund balance. So there was going to be, I guess, discussion on this item prior to voting. Is there a motion to approve this first?
Move for approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Wilder?
Again, we discussed this budget in the amendment some time ago. I think this is the second reading, correct?
Correct.
So it was just the second reading of the, of the budget we passed at the last meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
No, no comment.
Okay, any further discussion? Councilman Hugson?
Yeah, I know that you had the first reading on this last week. You know, what's interesting to me is about a year or so ago, when we had a record-setting surplus, and I pushed to say, hey, let's figure out what we can do to give back some of the record-setting surplus to our citizens. And a lot of people behind this dius said, oh, no, no, we can't do that. We have to do that during the budget time. Now, what we're saying is the second reading, because we had a meeting December second, where we had a budget retreat, that some of these items were saying, hey, if you don't want to, here's some ideas that you could do to spend the money. And now, without saying, hey, let's wait till the budget time, we're now easily saying, here's another eight point three million dollars of the surplus that we could spend really quickly. Some of the things are probably pretty good. Some of the things aren't. In addition to the eight million dollars that we just spent on the amphitheater, which some people have called it a stage with bathrooms, we got to start looking out for our taxpayer resources. I see this first item that's on here, three and a half million for White Rock Elementary School. And I see this is going to be the same thing that happened with the amphitheater. The amphitheater came out originally four million dollars. Four and a half million, like that. It was eight million. This White Rock, converting White Rock Elementary School, which normally should go under the normal capital improvement plan process, where we wrestle with how we're going to take these extra resources, or how we're going to bond finance, things that are really critical, the capital assets. This one, we had our meeting on December first. Basically, it said, hey, we can convert White Rock Elementary School because Lynn Cag isn't using it anymore. An estimate was three and a half million dollars to put in elevator, do some other things. I asked if that was going to be all. No, probably going to be a lot more than that. So we should typically count the cost, what is it totally going to cost us before we begin down a path? Also, so the three and a half million dollars is just the starting point. Also, in order to convert the White Rock Elementary School to some kind of neighborhood center, there was also the discussion on December first, brief discussion as it, as it was, that it's also going to cost more money in the operating budget, because we're going to have to have somebody in their housing in. Now, with that, shouldn't that be a discussion that we just, rather than saying, let's look at how we're spending these taxpayer resources? Because all this money, we're looking at eight point three million bucks here. We looked at eight million bucks for the amphitheater. We're looking at sixteen point three million dollars like that. We looked at other elements in our capital improvement plan, like some of the downtown beautification programs for another six million dollars. We're adding all these numbers up together. And we're looking at saying, how are we really going to fulfill our mission of really looking out for our taxpayers? Spending money on things that are critical are absolutely important. We talked in the Finance Committee today about some of our water pipes and the bursts that have happened. Those are things that are critical for everybody, because we need clean water. We need to make sure that these pipes are functioning. Some of these other items, we ought not to be just going, hey, somebody had a good idea of how we can spend the money, boom, let's spend the money. Some of these other items that we had on this list, again, we met, talked for maybe an hour or so on December first, pulled out a list, rather than figuring out what we could do to not have to borrow more money, not have to increase our debt service, not having to increase the financing and the debt obligations for our taxpayers, we could really say, ah, let's really put the pause. Before we go down and, for one, convert White Rock Elementary School for three and a half million dollars, and we know it's going to cost more, wouldn't a great solution be for us to say, rather than the city taxpayers buying it, being on the hook, wouldn't it be a better idea to at least explore, saying, how about if we sell this to somebody who can actually buy it, renovate it, have it be an asset in the community? Whether it be affordable housing, whether it be converted to some other type of school or some other type of charter school, or some other, something that could be utilized to benefit the community on somebody else's hook, rather than our taxpayers? Wouldn't it be nice if we had a property that wasn't paying any taxes, to be now be back on the tax rolls that can actually contribute and pay? So when we look at all these items, this additional eight point three million dollars, there's some things on here that I think are very good. Obviously, we're going to, with our new fire station, we do need to have, to begin the process of purchasing a new fire truck. Normally, those things kind of come through the budget process where we do the capital improvement plan. And again, this, to me, seems very different than what we did last year, when we said, we can't give back money out of this unassigned general fund balance. We need to do that during the budget, but we're spending it. I read the minutes from last meeting. One council member asked to have this question divided, which was refuted. Some of these items I'd vote for, some of them I wouldn't. And if we don't want to divide the question, I understand that, and I'll be voting against the entire motion unless Council would be open to dividing the question. It looked like there were five or six different items. I know you didn't want to divide it last time. Maybe I'll ask to see if you want to divide that question this time. And if not, I'll be voting against the motion as it stands, because I think we should be doing this and looking at the capital improvement spending on a fair playing field during the normal budget process when we're looking at all projects. We've heard of several that are coming up, whether it be renovations of schools, whether it be giving back taxpayer resources. But as it stands, I don't think we ought to be just keep on spending, especially when we know that White Rock is going to cost more than three and a half million bucks, and it's going to add to our operating budget by having to have more full-time equivalents to house it.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you. I do support the motion. White Rock Center, White Rock Building is a city asset, so we own that building, so we're responsible for that building. The city team got together, came up with some ideas, and we as a group voted on some of the best ideas, whether that was one of my top ones or not, but we as a group voted on those ideas, so I do support that motion. Secondly, I can't imagine just leaving a property, just in a facility of the community, and just dilapidate it and let it get destroyed, let it get torn down, when we can have it as an asset to our community, asset to our children, asset where we can help change some lives. I'm so thankful that persons at Liberty University had a vision. They didn't have closed-minded people. They had people with vision and said, we can build a university. We can make it world-class. We can build the best athletic facilities in the country. I'm so glad they weren't closed-minded and had the vision to think about the future and think about the community and think about the children that was coming to the institution. So we as a city, we can't just be closed-minded. We got to think about the future. We got to think about all our communities. Anytime they want to spend money in certain areas, like in White Rock or Florida Avenue, they call it the sidewalk, the sidewalk to nowhere. Anytime you would spend money in certain areas, they want to say, oh, no, we shouldn't do that. So we should spend money on Florida Avenue. We should spend money in White Rock. If we want to build a, we validate our community, say, let's have communities, help persons get jobs, to help persons have employment, or help maybe do a daycare, whatever the case may be, or partner with this group, or partner with Horizon, or partner with Lynn Cag, or whoever. We can do that, but it gives us opportunity to make change in our community. We talk about poverty. We can make some change in that area. Say, how can we adjust poverty in this area? We have a new asset now. What services can we put in there? So we got to think about the future. We got to think about our community. We got to think about change. And some people don't want change and don't want to change anything. They want to keep things the same. This is my money, and I don't want to spend it. What happened to the word about community? If we are a community, we're supposed to, supposedly love God, supposedly love one another, and say, I want to support this because it's my community, and my community needs something else. something else. So that's the point where I still put it, except for the community and several items. I might not have picked all of these, but again, we, I wanted the other item on here too, the toolkit for property, but it didn't make it, so I'm going for it anyway. I said we can look at that another way next time, but again, we're going forward with this. We discussed it last time and discussed it again today, but I do support this motion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Just want to clarify a few points. Conflating what we went through last year insofar as the tax policies to this year is not entirely accurate. There was a proposal to lower a tax rate mid-fiscal year in an effort to return, supposedly return taxpayer dollars, and that wasn't legal. This time around, we're using one-time monies for various capital projects. How there's a comparison to last year to this year, I don't quite follow the logic, although I do understand the premise, you know, we need to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayer dollars. Senator Newman counseled us at our budget retreat that we should continue to use one-time funds, surplus funds, on capital projects. Was he wrong? Sell the school? Sure. To be what? To go where? I don't know. But I do know there is a need in White Rock. I may not represent White Rock, right, golly, that part of the city as the Ward 4 representative, but in a way, I do as vice mayor. It's an interesting dichotomy that I'm in, by the way. And I certainly don't support every single item here. I don't. There's things missing here that desperately needed to be added. Speaking of parts of the city, Timberlake still needs more attention, and some of the items that we were considering, I would have hoped would have made it, but they didn't. We can be fiscally responsible, make strategic investments, and return taxpayer dollars. This whole package of $15 million does that. I know this council's been through a lot about this past year, but we've accomplished a great deal. And I want to fully recognize that there's differences of opinion, there's different philosophies, but I want to make sure we're all understanding how we got here, where we're going, what happened last year, what happened this year, and make sure we're all on the same page about what is fact and what we can do. And so I wanted to point some of those items out. The final point, it was said twice, we just spent $8 million on an amphitheater. That's not true. Mathematically, it's not. We allocate an additional allotment of money to say we just spent eight is not true. I believe I know the heart behind the message that my colleague was aiming to communicate and the intent, but the communication is not received that way, and it could be perceived as misleading. And in all this, I take the advice of Senator Newman. I take the advice of someone on many occasions I've disagreed a lot, Councilman Wilder, recognizing on a plethora of items, I don't agree with everything here, but overall, I believe it's a good package that the citizens would support. And for that reason, I'll renew my support.
Councilor Madison?
You know, I guess there's lots of things here that were stated that are actually completely untrue, so just to clarify, and again, not going tit-for-tat, what I said, I look at facts, I look at numbers, and I stand by the numbers. $8 million is what the amphitheater cost. Some people may try to spin it and use government jargon that says, oh, that wasn't our money because it came from federal money, or it came from a grant, or it came from this, or it came from that. It's our money. We had the ability to allocate that ARPA money, the $4.5 million that originally came for the amphitheater, plus the extra $3, $3.5 million that came, the extra $3 million. The total cost of the amphitheater is $8 million. I mean, it's not a fabrication. All you got to do is look at the records. All you got to do is look at all the items that were stated. Here's the total cost. The original cost was four and a half, now it's $8 million. We know that it is, so let's not play games with who's paying for it. It did come out of my right pocket or left pocket. Secondly, I can appreciate what Councilmember Wilder said, as far as having a vision. And I do have a vision. I don't have the vision that says, let's have government control everything. Let's have government spend other people's resources to renovate. Let's look at saying, what could happen if somebody bought that school? If somebody that had their own capital at risk that said, wow, here's what we can do. Look at what's happening on Lower Rivermont right now. You have the old Jones Memorial Library that's being renovated. Now, that's a vision. That's something that Jones Memorial Library sat there static for a long time. Now, there's a vision to turn it into a hotel. Look up the street a little bit further, the old school that was up there, that is now pretty nice apartments. You look at across the street, you look at the old Seven Hills School that was kind of getting run down. A private entity came in and bought that and turned that into a beautiful, it turned into lots of the gym and all the things that were decaying and falling apart. A private entity came in and bought it. So when I say, let's, when I hear Councilmember Wilder say, have a vision, I do have a vision. I would love to see us sell that to somebody who's going to turn that into something fantastic for the community. They could turn it into lots of things. They could buy it. They could be at risk for it. They could fix it up. They could turn it into low, affordable housing or other apartments, or they could figure out what's needed in the community, rather than the city and council saying, hey, we're going to give $3.5 million, knowing full well that it's not going to fix it. We heard that in our meeting December 1st, that that's not going to be enough, so that means there's going to have to be more. So I do hope that we would kind of have a vision, and the vision being understanding capitalism and how the private sector works, as opposed to every solution is more government spending. It doesn't work. More government spending leads to lots of decadence, and it doesn't lead to wonderful things. If we want to have a vision, and you talked about Liberty University, sell it to them, then for crying out loud, holy smokes, the things they could do over there. They could do lots of things if we actually sold this to a private developer, and you could see how that's expanding. Look over at the mall, what's happened? Oh, my goodness, lots, you've got ice skating rinks, and you've got fantastic Mexican food and new stores coming in. Sell it to somebody that's going to invest in and prove it, rather than the city government just taking more taxpayer money and kind of nodding away at the edges. So I'll be voting against this, and again, I hope people don't come back and say, oh, this is that and this is that, because I look at the facts. I look at the figures. It is my background. I've done that on council for 20 years. I've done that for clients for 35 years. I teach that. I look at finance, I look at the numbers. So I'm not just, I'm not just throwing out the numbers just to, in a fabrication. I realize what they are. So I do hope you'll consider this, but I know this is the second reading. I'm talking about it now because I sadly had to miss the last meeting, so thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
No, I just have a comment. You know, we were talking about one of the things that we want to do as a city, as a council, is invest in neighborhoods, and this is what this does. This is going to put something in that neighborhood that the community can use, rather than a developer coming in and genderfying the neighborhood more and putting up apartments that nobody can afford to live in.
Councilor Taylor?
I'm voting for it. We have plans for the property. We have, hopefully, an educational center for the neighborhood, after-school programs for the children in the neighborhood. That's the only neighborhood that doesn't have a recreation center in the entire city. And I believe when we have some young PhDs graduating from Liberty that's been through our programs, the White Rock Community Center, it will be a blessing. There will be taxpaying citizens coming through that building. That's worth it all.
I, there's a lot of things that have been said by everybody that I agree with regarding the package. I think that it's very balanced in achieving a lot of things for the city, because it, we're providing some relief in some of the things we voted for with some of the fee waivers that we're extending, and then it's allowing us to pay for some projects that are really good for the city. And, you know, being an at-large member of council does allow you to get to know the whole city, and I've gotten to have a lot of conversations all over the city and get to learn a lot that I wouldn't have otherwise, and that's not taking from our Ward representatives at all. This community center is really exciting to the people that have heard about it so far, and there's value in that. And it's not a waste of taxpayer dollars to the people that live in that part of the city who haven't had a community center ever. And there are a lot of conversations already taking place about who will occupy that space and pay money to do so, so that they can provide services to those community members, children and adults. So there are plans to make sure that the city doesn't have to spend a ton more. So no, we don't know for sure that it's going to cost way more, because there is a lot of interest already in people who want to be in that building. So we don't know for sure anything, except for the fact that it is a needed space for the community members. They're already excited about it. There's already a lot of conversations, and I think, I think it's going to be good for the people of White Rock. And I think, again, sometimes we just have to have, know that there's value in doing what's right for our people, and sometimes that's got to be enough initially when we start a project, and we have to have faith that the rest will come with it. And in this, in this case, the conversations I've had and the needs for that part of our community are great, and like Councilwoman Taylor has said, he's had a lot of those conversations for years about what's needed over there. This has been a long time coming, so I'm going to support everything that's in this package. I think that there were some things, as the vice mayor said, that we, I wish we could have added in. I agree with the toolkit, Dr. Wilder. With all that said, I think we can go ahead and vote.
The motion passes 5-1?
Oh, okay. All right, and last, we will go to what the vice mayor added from the Finance Committee meeting.
Yeah, I'll speak to it.
Okay, go ahead.
So for context, colleagues and to the general public, the Heritage Theater program was selected to participate in a regional competition conference, I believe it's called the Southeastern Theater Conference. Actually, I don't have a better name for it, but I believe that's the actual name. And it's a, it's a very large competition. It's something that these students were ecstatic about, and there's a cost to get there. Now, I know they've done yeoman's work to raise as much funds as they could to meet their own way there. They had a private, not a private, they had a fundraising effort this past weekend at the academy to raise significant funds to get them to be able to participate in this competition. Private entities have also donated, thousands of dollars have been raised to get them, but it wasn't enough. And there was a message put out there saying, now, the only reason they won't be able to go is for funds. Bit of context for why I believe we should do what this resolution states. In high school, I played in the marching band. I played baseball. I was in the engineering class. I did theater. I was all over the place. But I have a vivid memory, memory of our marching band and the competitions we were in got all the way to some of the top competitions in the Northeast. In our group, there were over 35 bands from nine different states, and we were top five. I mean, we had a chance to be some of the best in the entire Northeast. We ran into a problem, though. They couldn't find a bus driver. I was 15 or 16, maybe 17 years old. I vividly remember to this day how irate I was that if we were the football team, the money would exist and there'd be a bus driver. They would find a way to get the team to states. They would find a way to get the wrestlers to that match, or that match. They would find a way to get the track, whatever it was, we'll get you the resources. But anytime the arts came up, anytime theater, anytime marching band, choir, we had to raise our money, figure out our own way to get there, and sometimes we couldn't make it. And so I have a bit of a background with this. So I saw that there was a need, and I reached out and said, I need to know, how much is it going to cost to make sure that these students have the opportunity of a lifetime to compete in at this level and represent Lynchburg? The number we came up with was $15,000. We have a fund called the Reserve for Contingency Fund. Yes, I recognize traditionally that is for major emergencies that we need to supplement cash for. I recognize that. But I also see an opportunity. There are approximately 80,000 people who live in the city of Lynchburg. That means if it costs me a nickel and everybody else who lives in the city a nickel to send this group of kids to have this experience of a lifetime that they'll always remember as a part of their educational experience in Lynchburg City Schools, I'm going to give a nickel, and I think everybody else in the city would as well. This is not intended to tug at your heartstrings or anything of that sort. I see it as the right thing to do. Historically, the arts were neglected when it comes to these types of experiences, and athletics are flush with cash. With $110 million budget, I'm shocked that LCS couldn't figure out 15 grand to make these kids go. They were able to muster about 6,000, if memory serves. We've got over a million dollars waiting to be used, and if it's not used, like it typically isn't, it just goes right to that end-of-year fund balance, and we're going to spend it on capital projects like we just did. So I thought, let's take initiative. Let's get these kids where they deserve to go and hopefully bring back a first-place trophy, plaque, whatever it may be. That's the background. It has been fully vetted. City staff worked with me over the weekend to get it to this place. So the motion is from Finance Committee, that $15,000 be appropriated from the Reserve for Contingency Funds to Lynchburg City Schools to instruction. You have the language for the resolution in front of you. I made the motion, understanding from Councilmember Huggins' concerns from process, I would request, even though it technically isn't required, a second, if someone would be willing to second, just to show further emphasis behind the, the proposal here, and I.
Is there a second, Al?
Second.
Okay. Would you like to speak to it?
I do support the motion. First of all, I want to always support our schools, I support our children. So any way we can get more funds to our schools, I'm always in favor of that. I was watching the news this morning and noticed that Spence White, who's from Lynchburg, is the, is the director, the drama teacher at Jefferson Forest, and they've received some kind of like a national award or whatever. So we have a lot of talent in our area. Our students have worked hard to get this place. From my understanding, it's an unexpected expense, unexpected award to receive, so we want to do what we can to support them so they can do that. And they have raised half the money, and we're going to support them in the other part as well. And also, the school board probably couldn't move any funds, because if they moved any funds, they'd be in serious trouble. So they probably were scared to move any funds. That's why they probably couldn't move funds to support this project, because they pretty much got them pigeonholed in certain areas, so they, they probably didn't want to touch that. But I support our students, and I think it's a good, as, as Councilmember Chris Farady said, it's a, it's a good thing to do for our kids, to show that we care about them. Sometimes the arts does get left behind. I know we have actors in this, in this building, sometime the arts get left behind, so we want to do what we can to support our students. Thank you.
Councilman Huggins?
Thank you. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I went to the Fiesta Bowl. I mentioned this since it was brought up today at the Finance Committee, again, unbeknownst, it made me recollect and think. And so the Fiesta Bowl, went there as a fan of Liberty University, got to see and cheer on the team. And as I was out there, I remembered back in ninth grade, I went to the Fiesta Bowl. I went to the Fiesta Bowl, played at the Fiesta Bowl, played the trombone in the Fiesta Bowl. And, and to get there, baby of eight kids, we didn't have the money to just pay for it, so we sold fruit baskets. Sold fruit baskets to pay so we could actually go on the trip with the band, the marching band, to go and play at the Fiesta Bowl Parade and go out there and have that whole time. So that is the arts. So I'm very familiar with, with the difference of sporting events and sporting teams versus the arts. And with that, it was a great experience. And so now I look at this, and I think, well, how do we pick one versus others? How many groups have said, man, if we only had a little bit more money, we could do this trip? And now, you know, I can appreciate what Chris said about, you know, if he's willing to give a nickel, great. This isn't a matter of benevolence. We're up here not benevolently giving our own resources. We're hitting a button and taking from somebody in order to give somebody else. That isn't kind. That isn't charity. That isn't benevolence. That isn't nice. That is taking from somebody, from one group of people, taking from maybe the seniors at Valley View Community, Valley View, or the, the other businesses at Windhurst, or the other folks at Richland Hills, raising their taxes so we can feel good about giving it to some other group. To me, that isn't kind. That isn't good to take from somebody to give to somebody else. Let them voluntarily decide who they're going to give their money to. With this trip, now you think about this, and you think about how many other groups that are going to come in when we think of just a matter of justice and fairness. How many groups had said, man, I wish I had a little bit more money? Or, we're going to raise money. Well, guess what? You don't have to raise money now. Just go to the city government. They'll just take the taxes from one group and give it to another. So it is a precedent that isn't a good precedent. I, I can appreciate the desired effect or the appearance of benevolence, but it is far from anything that is kind or nice or generous. It's kind or nice or generous if you give your own resources. Totally get that. What other groups are going to come up and say, well, I didn't quite raise the money, I didn't sell enough fruit baskets, so now I'm going to just go to the city government, ask them to pay for it? And pretty soon, all those extra resources that we thought we had are gone. Now, I can appreciate the fact that, you know, as Chris stated, that we kind of worked on this all weekend, and, oh, man, it's been vetted, and wasn't even sure how much was raised or what the name of the group is. But I'm, I'm glad that at least you had the resolution that showed what the budget was that we approved for the schools. Maybe one idea, rather than taking it from the Reserve for Contingencies, would be if the schools wanted to utilize these resources, we take it from the reserve that we already set up with the schools, with what the very resolution that we see in front of us, with those classifications for expenditures. We have 1.6, 1,671,280 sitting in the contingency reserves that this council approved in the school's operating budget. So now we say, oh, well, we're here, we thought we could take it from this place and give it to that place, and to me, that is why you don't do things as a knee-jerk reaction. That's why before we spend money, we think it through. We really debate and we really think things of what's the, the intended consequences of maybe sending this group to some arts trip, or versus the unintended consequences of what other groups are not going to have to raise money? What other citizens are going to say, huh, dang it, you took my taxes and gave it to your favorite charity, or gave it to somebody, when you had 1.6 million dollars sitting there in the reserve already, that you could have freely, easily allocated and said, hey, we're going to move that to instruction, and then the schools can actually take care of it? So as this is presented, I don't, I don't think it was thought through. I think that we need to really think about our taxpayers' resources to safeguard them, not to just hit buttons and spend it. So lots of solutions that could be there, and 1,671,000 is a number that's glaringly obviously sitting in front of us. And I think if we approve this, it's a very bad precedent, especially when you have other solutions. So I'll be voting against this, and I hope you, council does as well. Again, it's not benevolent to take other people's money and give it to somebody. It is benevolent to take your own and freely donate it to the group that is trying to raise money. Do that. Don't do somebody else's money.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, I would like to, to be noted that I detest the contempt and criticism by my colleague for diminishing this proposal to a trick. Thank you.
Councilman Taylor?
Do we have the funds? Will it hurt our citizens to give the school $15,000?
We, we have the funds in a reserve for contingency that's designed for council to use for contingent expenses. This would be considered a contingent expense. Typically, in the past, it's been used for more emergent situations, but there's nothing to keep council from using it for this purpose.
Thank you.
If I may, if you were going to ask a question, I would ask a question that I mentioned about the contingency reserves, 1.6 million dollars that's sitting in the school's operating are the budget that council approved. Maybe you can address that.
Madam Mayor, if, he doesn't have to respond to this, but would Councilman Huggins support that amendment to their budget?
I will answer that no, I don't, for the various reasons that I stated.
So even with your proposal, you would support it anyway?
But to me, that would have been something where you took a little more time and actually looked at the resolution before us and said, huh, what was that contingency reserve that we set up, 1.6 million dollars? That the schools, as, as Councilmember Wilder said, they'd be afraid to spend more than what was in instruction if they wanted to spend it from that allocation. That would be something that at least is plausible. Again, the negatives are those unintended consequences, which I've already stated, but at least this would be something that would be a little more thought out because that money was already allocated there, so.
Okay. So from what I understand, the schools did give $6,000. And from what I also understand, the schools are fighting to hold on to the money that they have, and they have a lot to spend as, on, on what they're currently trying to spend on. And like today, I found out we have one reading resource teacher amongst five schools. One. We have 125 students at Fort Hill Alternative School, most of which have a reading level of second and third grade. Did y'all know that? And they share a reading teacher with four other schools. So if I was going to support any of those contingency reserves, the first thing I would ask them to do is spend it on reading teachers. Not on this trip. I'd much rather us support this trip so that we can provide reading support for our students. So with that said, let's go ahead and vote, please.
And the motion is taken from the Reserve for Contingency still.
Correct.
And just as a clarification, since this is, this is spending money, this does require two readings? Thank you.
Passes 5-1 and one absent.
Okay. This meeting is now adjourned. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on February 13th, 2024, at 4:00 PM in Council Chamber.